Hi, Planning Board. You're on mute. You can't hear anything.
Wow, so you haven't heard any of this?
Nothing. That's why I was raising my hand. Thank you so much.
Oh, sure. We're so sorry.
That was intentional.
I will just recap. On on participating on Zoom. So Mr. Pusilowski is here representing the Community Land Trust of South Berkshire for a recommendation by this board to the select board for modification to their special permit to allow them to sell one acre of land to the Great Barrington Fire District for the purposes of an alternative interconnection with Husatonic Water Works. The planning board basically had no questions on this. Save I had a comment about seeing if the community land trust can compel the fire district to leave some sort of ventilated buffer between the adjacent residential property to the north. And Jonathan had, I can't remember what your comment was, oh, size of structures, that there will be a structure associated with infrastructure improvements that would go on the site. So we were just about to take a vote or excuse me, make a recommendation to select board. We were thinking if there was any public comment. So there's still a hand raised by CDC South Berkshire. Is that for us in this matter?
I think that's the next.
I was gonna say, I was gonna make the same comment about muting. So you fixed that.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, everyone. Okay, so given the recap and everything, do we have a motion to make a positive recommendation?
To make a positive recommendation, select board on this matter.
Okay, and then second by Jonathan. Okay, so motion by Malcolm, second by Jonathan. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Peter. Super fast. Six minutes. Oh, it's the next one, too? All right. All right, then we'll move on to item number four. Special permit, review and comment to the select board on the app, excuse me, I'm sorry. Oh, no, that is review and comment to the select board on the application from Community Development Corporation of South Berkshire to permit a hotel use at 453 Stockbridge Road, Great Barrington, in accordance with zoning sections 3.14(c) 8, 7.10, and 10.4.
So Brady, before we start, I just want to point out that for last time you came into our forum, I mentioned that I submitted an appearance of conflict of interest form to the town clerk because I had done some work for them pertaining to this particular item or endeavor that they're about to embark on. But I am no longer employed by them or nor do I have any future contracts with them at this time.
You made no promises.
I made no promises. I just gave them information.
Okay, all right. Thank you for disclosing that. Um, anybody else have any disclosures? No? Okay, Peter, go ahead.
Peter Pusilowski, on behalf of CDC, attended by Zoom, Jim Howard, the president, and Tom Doyle, who's a member of the board, and CDC of South Berkshire, should be Phil Orsting, who is the acting director. This is a proposal to convert the Thorne Wood Inn from a tourist inn to workforce housing. On the zoning status of the inn is pretty ambiguous since there's only one special permit on record, and that was to allow an apartment over the garage. And it does say there are pre-existing non-conforming use, but the original Great Barrington bylaw in the 1930s required a special permit for this, and we couldn't find any, so we just want to clarify the status before we buy it.
So basically, you're cleaning up the record?
Yeah, with a mild expansion. Fourteen rooms to nineteen.
Did you know when B2A went into effect?
It was a long time ago. I don't remember. But every, every zoning bylaw since first is recorded in a special term in.
Chris, I was reading in the narrative that they provided that that special permit was issued to add the apartment in a lodging house. So doesn't that give, give them some kind of permission to operate?
There's, there's no original special permit on record that actually grants the, the use as an inn. In fact, one was applied for but withdrawn.
So even if it's called out?
The evidence on record is in fact that there is no special permit.
So even if it's called out, it's like it just called out because of the way that it was being used?
No, that's that doesn't grant any legal status.
Evidence to keep looking.
Okay. Board members, what questions do you have about the application? We're all familiar with the site. We're, we're becoming more familiar with the purpose of use.
Hopefully, you won't need this special permit after a meeting, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how that'll go, but um, yes, that's a possibility.
Where I saw before.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I got it. I got it.
The idea is that you're gonna continue to operate as a sort of transient facility, but you're gonna offer renewal leases every thirty days.
Transient has a bad connotation. There are currently fourteen rooms. We'd like to expand it to nineteen rooms, and part of that is dividing up the current dining into single occupancy rooms, and it's for people who don't qualify for subsidized housing, but still can't afford to live here. So there will be income limitations on the units, and it will be successive thirty day leases.
Have you taken a look at the draft zoning bylaw that we've been working on?
I haven't. Chris just gave it to me.
Okay, okay. In terms of site plan, will this have to come back to us for site plan?
Change of use? I'm not sure. I think we'll rely on the building inspection determination.
Yeah, the change of use, and they're not, there's no new construction.
Right, there's no exterior.
No exterior alterations. Okay, okay. Jeremy, questions?
Um. No.
Malcolm, questions?
No, we're being asked to vote to make this hotel a hotel?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
It's a recommendation.
No, I don't have any question.
Okay. Jackie, anything?
I was wondering about even what. When is all this expected to happen?
The, the special permit?
No, not the special permit, just the closing.
Well, the hearing on the potential permit is March 11th, so when the twenty day appeal expires, we'll buy the property and, and then we'll have to line up people to do the work, but April Fool's Day, since so many of the rooms don't need a lot of alteration, some of them will be occupied pretty quickly.
Jonathan, any questions? Adrian? Okay, I don't have any questions either. Thank you, Jonathan. Good. A second from Jeremy. Are there any comments from the public or questions? Neither here nor online, so if there's no further discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous.
Wish they all were.
Right?
Was that another six minutes?
Thank you, Peter. Have a good evening. All right, next item on our agenda, number five, special permit and site plan review for Nine Elm Court for recommendation to the zoning board of appeals on special permit application from the W E B DuBois Center for Freedom and Democracy for the restoration and exterior alterations in the non-conforming structure at Nine Elm Court in Great Barrington in the Village Center overlay district, and site plan review for exterior alterations and change of use.
I have a question. Normally, we don't do a site plan review until after discussion permitting is granted.
I, I agree, and did you have something in mind? Because I had a thought about this, but.
Well, it's on your agenda because it was part of the application.
Right. Because maybe we have to do it tonight, though.
It's always useful. I think it guides your.
To give you commentary.
What the issues are. Oftentimes, you'll ask the applicant if they'd be willing to defer the actual site plan approval until after the special permit is granted.
Yeah.
So, you know, you ask for a continuance if you had to, to, to a later date.
I'd suggest we go through the criteria so that we raise any site-related issues to make up some seem reasonable. And then disclosures.
My disclosures that I'm going to accuse myself of these discussions just because of appearance and possible conflict of interest because I've been working with the Clinton Church Restoration Project, also known as the DuBois Freedom Center, since I moved here, so and I hope I keep doing it, but that's all I'm going to say.
Um, let's see. Does she need to remove herself to the audience? I think you do.
Just change positions, audience. Yeah.
Yes.
You don't trust me?
Okay, great. So having this done with all of that, Nick, how are you?
Very good.
Good. Do you want to introduce yourself and the project?
I would love to do that. My name is Nick Arienski, and I am the attorney and representative for the applicant here tonight for the special permit application and site plan review application. The applicant's name is the W E B DuBois Center for Freedom and Democracy, formerly known as the Church Restoration Inn. Be extremely formal. The applicant is a nonprofit corporation in Massachusetts, formed for charitable and educational purposes. And the site that the entity owns and the proposed project is going to, we hope is going to occur, is right here in the center of Great Barrington on Nine Elm Court. Just stones true. The application is made pursuant to sections 5.3, 9.6, 10.4, and I guess 10.5 as well. The zoning bylaws here in Great Barrington, and I'm gonna give, not quite gonna the, the memory item that I submitted in conjunction with her application was pretty comprehensive, but a lot of the information is, I don't think, relevant, so I'm gonna state some of it, and then we have got other members of first of all, our project team here, Steve Mack, who's here for site engineering, done the site work and submitted a separate but included site plan review application that addresses all the site plan review questions as well, I hope, as well as some of the special permit information, and Tobias Brenner from Park Green and Beck.
What does he say again?
Tobias Brenner. Yeah, okay. I think I got it. And they are representative of much larger professional team that's been working on this project now for some time in order to get to where we are today, which is the Mission Day. Presentation Day, rather. There are also, and I just wanted to recognize some members of the administrative staff here in person of the center, as well as various board members, as well as virtually, I think we have attending some members of the staff, other contributing parties, and members that the center has worked with over the last couple of years, to be honest, in order to get this project to a place where we're ready to go, which where we hope to be. So I might as well move it right along to, to give kind of the overview. Center is restoring the historic Clinton AME Zion Church over on Elm Court for adaptive reuse as an African-American heritage site cultural center dedicated to educating the public in life about the the public about the life and legacy of W E B DuBois, civil rights pioneer, and notably also the Berkshire's rich African-American culture. The former church served as a spiritual, cultural, and political heart of Black Flag Southern Berkshire County community for nearly one hundred and thirty years. The AME Zion Society built the church ways back, originally eighteen eighty-six, eighteen eighty-seven was the construction date of the first portion of the church. And at that time, it was a formative influence in the life civil rights pioneer and double N double A C P co-founder W E B DuBois, who was born and raised in Great Barrington. The church itself is a shingle-style church in itself is historically and architecturally significant for its association with the religious and cultural heritage of African-Americans in rural New England and of the distinct example nineteenth century of vernacular architecture. It is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. So one of the goals is obviously to make this treasure shine like it once did, and I think in the way that it's been presented in this application. So restoration of this property will not only save each component of Great Barrington's rich catalog of historic buildings, but preserve significant community legacy. This project is part of a larger recent trend, growing national trend to save historically significant African-American sites and bring their hidden and untold stories into the light as far as our complex American story. In the Berkshire, the new center will enrich the cultural landscape and contribute to its economic vitality by creating a unique site of national and also international significance. So the vision, the big picture is for the center to serve as a visitor's center. Ultimately, an interpretive venue, a hub for African-American heritage sites throughout the region, community meeting space, a cultural gathering spot that offers separate programs and performances included to educate as well as inform the public. And that is, those are all purposes that have continually constantly been part of the purpose of the church and site throughout its inception, and really until recently, it's had the opportunity to serve those purposes. So certainly that's one of the key goals is to be able to fulfill those traditional and social goals once again. The intended key elements of the center are visitor's center, which will be able to offer guided tours of African-American and voice-related historic sites in and around Great Barrington in the local area, will be able to offer interpretive exhibits, interactive media, oral histories, and have a plethora of changing displays throughout the, throughout the, the middle and upstairs floor building, and that will be showcasing programming and events, particularly educational programs, with schedules of events in the main hall, flexible performance space, including concerts, films, talks, and performances, each of which will highlight African-American voices and creative works. Also included in the building is the community room, which is on the lower level, which will be, we can explain a little bit further, will be the entry level, which is the lower level of the building. Currently officially very much a basement, but will be envisioned for a new and far beneficial use than currently is. A little bit about history and its relevance to the project, and what informed the design both architecturally and from educational purposes. Okay, so the church again was dedicated eighteen eighty-seven as the Clinton AME Zion Church. The church, ever since its founding, was really more than a place of worship, as I mentioned before. For over a hundred and thirty years, it's served as a social community and educational center for the local African-American community, offering a rich variety of programs, including performances, guest speakers, children's classes, music, and public speaking. The church also has a story, history, as a focal point for social and political activism, driving first, driven first by segregation and the violence of Jim Crow era, continuing into the nineteen fifties and sixties when it hosted the Berkshire County Chapter of the N double A C P, as well as anti-poverty and human rights groups. As a cultural heritage center, the intent is for the restored church again to be a forum for community engagement with issues of civil rights, race, and social justice, as well as a performance and importantly, an educational center. So what will the project's role be? What will be able to bring to Great Barrington and downtown Great Barrington? Fortunately, its, its goals and its vision align with Great Barrington's community preservation plan, which states that Great Barrington's historic legacy and cultural resources are important contributors to our quality of life and economy. That by restoring this site, this historically significant site, revitalizing and deteriorated downtown building and drawing local residents to tour it downtown, center will help create vitality and economic activity consistent with the plan's goals and align closely with the town's master plan and advances the, the initiatives by protecting our community character, enhancing our neighborhoods, promoting redevelopment of our village centers. Further, as a cultural and economic resource in Great Barrington's downtown, the center supports and will support the plan's vision, which is articulated as an embrace of the people of any ages, incomes, and ethnicities that calls for his history, walkable neighborhoods, and vibrant village centers as the foundation for the town's future viability. Further, land uses is another way in which the center advances master plan by transforming what is clearly and currently an ice war into a vibrant, beautiful, welcoming community resource right in the center of town. Just to talk about the site a little bit, the site itself, existing additions. In case you haven't looked at the plans or walked Elm Court recently or ever, the site is tiny, this particular site. Site itself is only point eleven acres, so it's about four thousand eight hundred eighty-four square feet. And the building itself is under two thousand square feet, one thousand nine hundred fifteen. So there's only, there's just under three thousand square feet left, still usable. It's a tight site by any definition. One notable thing about the site and about the project is that on the north side of the site is a very small parcel of town-owned land, which does currently have a sidewalk on it. And there's not much use other than, well, including the sidewalk, there's not much use in personal property. However, it's noteworthy to point out for a couple of reasons, because this area was traditionally used and mainly by the church. Used for recreation, outdoor, you know, dining with weather, and was a social function area throughout its history. Lots, obviously tiny. I think it's point zero two acres, approximately just over a thousand square feet. I'll come back to the lot and just in that, but it is the proposal would like to let that land be better used in conjunction. the proposal would like to let that land to better use in conjunction, not only with the project, but as an actual benefit to the town. I'm not sure the sidewalk gets a lot of traction at the moment. Building itself, again, originally contracted eighteen eighty-six, eighteen eighty-seven, subject to a number of changes throughout the years. There's an addition eighteen ninety-eight, addition between eighteen ninety-five, eighteen ninety-eight. Construction of the parsonage winged approximately nineteen thirty-nine, conversion of the cellar from an unfinished space to a usable basement, which I, I wouldn't call usable at this point anymore, and that was approximately nineteen fifty-one. Bell Free and Sanctuary were renovated nineteen seventy-five. And the front entry porch, what has traditionally and historically been the front entrance of the church, was, was renovated and restored nineteen seventy-five. Tobias, for architectural purposes, can provide some additional information about existing conditions, construction, foundation, the sad deteriorated state of the building right now. So we can move forward, which the plan is to do some, hopefully some short-term stabilization, structural showing work in order to ensure that the building doesn't deteriorate any further, that's in the short term. The name of the building was constructed, as you might imagine, back in eighteen ninety-eight and early part of the twentieth century without regard to accessibility by people with disabilities. And lack of accessibility runs throughout the building, not just getting into it. So, you know, in some, the building and the existing site are extremely confined, there are need of major improvements. And, you know, the site in the, and the building, for all the reasons I've already cited, are challenging for any reuse of the structure, particularly in a historic and sensitive structure and done in a way that is going to honor the prior use. Hopefully be asset and value to the neighborhood, kind of Great Barrington, you know, the region and the country. So it's a lot to pack into solving the problem, but they said for a lot of time it's been put into the next step. So as far as what's being proposed, the site itself, back to the, kind of the north side, the, the the center is proposing to and has requested as part of its application to enter into a license agreement with the town to permit the center to use this swath of land on the north side for a beneficial use. And again, I use that's traditional and reflects the prior use of the property historically. Exhibit two in the application is a copy of the license agreement that was submitted to the town as well as a copy of the plan that isolates and illustrates what that, you know, the size of that parcel where it is located, how it's relative and connected. That area is intended to be landscaped, outdoor entry port landscaping, and will, will house a lot or will be the site of a large portion of the entry block. I guess it goes from the northeast corner and gradually makes its way down to what will be the northwest corner of the building now at the lower level, or what will be the lower level grade. So that's a significant aspect of the use of this site. And again, that site's going to be natural, natural landscaping. There will be a, there will be a retaining wall along some portion of that, which is dry laid stone, not considered a structure under the zoning by law or the building code, and just will will define a raised portion of the yard as it's proposed. Okay, Steve Mack is going to provide some additional information on site as well as, you know, address some of the more details, some of the additional details, Christian just site plan review in just a couple minutes. The proposal does call for building a building overall twenty-four inches, which is one of the needs, one of the things that is driving the need to have a retaining wall in this location because the grade's going to come up on the front in a nutshell. And Tobias is going to discuss some of this in detail. But the need to bring up the grade and to raise the building is first and foremost because of clearance issues in the lower level existing, as well as drainage issues and water that is unsustainable for a beneficial and legally. So in total, there'll be a twenty-four inch raise, which is what drives the exterior, a grade raise on the outside.
This is flying church two point oh?
Not quite. I, I remember that one, it was a bit more than twenty-four inches. So, so details on that can be filled in a little bit later. One of the aspects of the building that is extremely important, critical, integral for the overall redevelopment of the site is, is addressing the issue of accessibility. Okay, it really is, is kind of a linchpin in this case to making the design work, making the programming work and allowing the intended use of the entirety of the property and the building to function. And so what that requires is, as I referenced before, using the lower level eventually as the primary point of residence. Okay, so that entry needs to be excavated out and, you know, that's reflected in the renderings that you see at exhibit three, it's also reflected in the landscape, drawings out four and O one and the scene, site plans are reflected in some of the architectural plans as well. Okay, the adrons. So what's necessary is to install the entrance at that location, there's a small expansion. At that point, it's a net-net about forty-two feet expanded area of the whole footprint. But that entrance is going to allow for an elevator first and foremost, so that the entire structure, lower level, middle level and the upper level will all be accessible in the public and all of the members of staff, they might could go in. And there needs to be available for emergency purposes, you can put a structure on it, etc. The elevator is a necessary element and addresses access, there's also an area in that location. That entrance structure is the only element of the structure that is not going to be, that's not part of the historic, you know, renovation and historic restoration of the building. And it's necessary again to provide, to provide access. It's done in a way that is not intended to be a reflection of the historic character, it's intended to be distinct and discernible. And that is, you know, the architect can explain more of the details, but that is a necessary requirement. And is something that is typical in cases where we have historic buildings that are in need of an addition like this. Again, the, the three levels on the inside of the building, lower level, main level and the upper level. The lower level itself is intended to consist of a staff reception area, gift area, restrooms, and a multi-use community space, which is in the old church social hall area. And the intent is for that to be used for caterer parties, it's a warming kitchen. Well, it's not a commercial kitchen. It's not going to be any use that is going to be, you know, producing, you know, food or any kind of purposes like that, just a warming kitchen, caterer parties, meetings, seminars. And it will be available for travel, for traveling or temporary exhibits. Hey, there's then, there's a stairway that leads from the lower level up to the main level, which is the original church sanctuary. And that is to be used for museum displays, cultural events, concerts, readings, panel discussions, just to name a few. And the upper level will have additional museum display, audio recording studio for oral history as well as the office for the building. Just very briefly, the architectural character of the building is intended to accomplish a number of things, as I said before. It's not intended to be, this is the entrance aspect is not intended to be at the most attention of the older church. So they just differentiate it and that's direction reports in keeping with the principles set forth and the Secretary of Interior's standard for treatment of historic places. I can get into the zoning if you want me to address that at this point. It's in the B two district, been in the business district ever since the zoning by law was adopted. It's now in the V C O D, which is reflected frankly in the use of the property. It's a perfect fit in the V S D, and it happens to be just a fine fit in the V two, which helps to facilitate what we're doing now because of the progression of the zoning in this area. So I can tell you that pose use is a good fit for zone. One thing that I wanted to point out in particular before I hand it over to Steve Mack to do some site plan review is that in addition to hopefully providing a positive recommendation to zoning board of fields on the special permit application, as well as, as well as approval, if you will, of site plan review. There is a request for a deviation that I need or that we need the planning board to consider. Okay, and that is, that is kind of captured in exhibit six, and that pertains to lighting. So there are a couple of lighting aspects which are specifically found out in the application pursuant to section six four six one and six four six five. Yeah, pursuant to section six four seven, the applicant here is requesting that the planning board make a finding affecting a deviation to final authorization by the D V A, that's special center's standing authority. Connecting the dots on the kind of administrative and structural end of the surveying process. What I will explain to them very briefly. The two requested deviations under section six four six are number one for the, for permission, permission of installation and use of two uplight fixtures of twenty-five watts or less to illuminate the bell free. That's one, and two is installation, our building code requires egress lighting on the south side, which I believe are attached to the building and just points straight down, illuminating. So that is the request, just wanted to make sure that was clear and that we're asking the board to consider this out. You know, at this point, I think it makes sense for me to turn over to Steve Mack, who should explain in more detail the site. And I think when he's done, then Tobias, and explains some of the aspect that we might, some of the aspects of the architecture it might have, and obviously at any point we're free to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, it's for you. Where is the license in terms of approval with the town? Has that been approved?
It's not yet approved.
So that would be the select board?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's my understanding, that select board would, either party would formally approve.
So, so you've had no discussion with the point, with the select board about that?
Not direct.
What happens if they don't agree with?
My understanding is that they're open to it.
Also separately, just in terms of the development plan, what has been the outreach or engagement with the elders?
Yeah, I think recently there has been kind of limited direct outreach. There has been, there have been conversations with direct elders over the last couple of years, is my understanding. You know, not all entirely positive, but I think that you know, there hasn't been an opportunity yet to sufficiently present a proposal that addresses comprehensively the site. Yeah, I don't believe there's been any direct communications with the elders recently.
Okay, thank you. Somebody else for next? We can, you can pull more chairs up if you'd like, or you don't have to like swap out.
Technical question?
Yes, technical question.
As a donor to both the Clinton Church and Freedom Center, I, I don't think I have a conflict with the engine, right?
I don't think so, I think it's a financial interest in the other direction.
Yeah, okay. I keep waiting, nothing.
Just, just see when Tobias has got screen shared.
Oh, okay, wonderful.
Okay, Steve Mack from Four Site Land Services, and we are the civil engineers for the project. I'll just recap a little bit of what Nick said and elaborate on the site conditions. So the property is in the B two zoning district and V C R D, and it consists of about forty square feet. And the minimum required square footage is five thousand square feet, so it's not conforming with respect to acreage. Additionally, it's not conforming with respect to the front, side and rear yard setbacks. The front setback required is twenty-five feet, and it's currently twenty-three point seven feet. The side yard setback is required to be ten feet, and on the north side of the building, it's one point eight feet. And on the south side of the building, it is five point two feet. And the rear is required to be ten feet and is four point six feet, so it's pretty existing. In many respects. The site as it currently sits is almost all lawn sidewalk or building, there's no landscaping, there's maybe one bush that we could identify on the property. There's no onsite parking, obviously it's very, very small. The, the parking for the facility is traditional, traditionally municipal parking, street parking, no adjacent streets and whatnot. It's served by municipal water and sewer. And not too long ago, those services were replaced to the property line, so it's new services within the road in the last couple of years. It has traditionally had overhead private utilities, electric, cable, telephone. And as Nick mentioned, it's not handicap accessible currently, there's sort of a variety of steps and accessways and whatnot to get to the building. The drainage, it is connected to the town drainage in Elm Court. It has foundation drainage connected to the municipal system, and it has service drainage connections. We've camera inspected the drainage system in Elm Court out to Main Street, go sort of go south and then down railroad, all mesh repairs. Just to confirm capacity and there's no breaks, none of this. So that's existing conditions. And obviously the proposal is to renovate the property into an educational, educational and cultural center, as was just defined. So just getting into the site a little bit. Parking, the zoning by law requires in this zoning district that no additional off-street parking is required for a proposal like this. So there's no existing parking, we're proposing to maintain municipal parking. proposal like this, so there's no existing parking. We're proposing to maintain municipal parking, obviously. Um, in large events, the center will post, uh, locations of municipal parking lots in the beginning of municipal parking to address, you know, people coming in to visit the site, don't know where to go, or look for parking. Uh, they do anticipate occasionally having a van or a bus that will drop people off, exit the site. Um, so from a traffic impact on the view, it's almost product all, um, pedestrian traffic. Everybody will be partnering offsite along to the site, which has handicap accessible sidewalks with the town's right way. That's, yeah, we're providing handicap accessible access to the property, uh, from there. So in our, um, site plan review application, the board thinks it's necessary with aspects of the waiver of strict compliance of requirements, which is it's a pretty heavy new traffic requirement for a project that really has negligible, negative traffic. Things required. For utilities, uh, we are, uh, we've done some rough calculations sort of on the pre historic use of the facility, just for, uh, those comparisons say versus proposed usage, there would be an increase this use versus the previous use. The services and the line of the street is adequate. The increase is approximately about fourteen hundred gallons per day, about from what we estimate of the church use to me versus the, uh, center's use. Um, we are proposing to bury the overhead power. I don't even think it goes to the building now, but historically it's been overhead power that will be buried, um, to, to the property. And stormwater, uh, we are matching, so, you know, removing a bunch of sidewalk, removing sections of building, putting the, the elevator shaft in and then that handicap accessible sidewalk. But we're adding a significant amount of landscaping, which is not there now, which will help reduce and treat and, uh, improve water quality. We did say in our site plan review application, uh, if the board thinks it's required, we've developed sort of stormwater report, just maybe something so small, we're not really changing much, we're removing some, putting some back, but also improving the, um, the site with significant, I think, so that's part of the stormwater report. Stormwater. Um, there's no areas nearby that are subject to Walens Protection Act. There's no flood planning. There's no natural heritage, which is a native species, so we're going to get a connect on conservation, um, for this project. Um, and we are, as Nick said, we're proposing some low stone walls. I can point them out where they're going and probably the heights would be helpful, but, uh, sort of just to raise the building up, uh, and seeing the sort of gray modeled, elevator type there, there are some walls, uh, all below four feet mostly, oh, significantly less than that.
Can you, and maybe you need to do it with him. Go back, Tobias, Tobias. Can you tell us how the levels change at the front from the street to the sidewalk to the stone wall? Like, how, how much vertical increases there?
Um, excavation.
Um, yeah, maybe.
I, I was trying to put it together between the, this plan and then the elevation. Well, there is a grading.
Does it show?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out, if that was actually representative of it. I see that, and I see it.
Randy, which one is up here?
Uh, I am looking at eight point two dash A in the Park and Green screens.
And so where is the street grade on that?
So if you flip to the next page, L one point zero, site plan landscape, there's a lot of little spot elevations, it's just the next page. Yeah, and that's the one that's up on the screen right now. So, so it looks like the street is at elevation one hundred on the east side, right at the bottom of your curb ramp there, yeah.
To east side is.
Is Elm Court.
At Elm Court, yeah. I'm curious where it goes down to on the north, uh,
so if you want to zoom in a little.
Is that north side or? Yeah, north side.
It's hard to do it without a mouse, isn't it?
So the, the street grade is roughly one hundred.
Yeah, at that, and it's higher at the other end, right? Cause it goes slightly down. At the, at the, like Rossiter Street.
The other way.
It's dropping very, very slightly.
Yeah, yeah.
And the basement floor is elevation ninety-eight.
Yeah.
So this is, uh, roughly a two foot drop right here.
But what does it go up on?
It's elevation one hundred here at the landing. There's a handicap ramp here. This is elevation one hundred.
Where is here?
That's right at the.
We're, we're trying to have. Yeah.
And then, uh, the elevation in the entry courtyard is elevation ninety-eight.
What is the, what is the elevation on the street though, next?
It's a one oh two five right here.
So that's the four foot.
Yeah, this is where it would be the retaining wall right along the north side.
The north side of Elm Court. Okay.
That's like the only spot that it's the eyes there.
And because it's planted, do you not need railings or do you need railings there?
I, it's a large width of, of the space, maybe railings.
Okay. And, and then on, so that's the north side of the building where the entry closet is. On the east side, it looks like there's the street and then the curb and then the sidewalk and then two levels of retaining.
Right, so what's being proposed there is you would come off the sidewalk onto the site, and then you would head south here, which is about a five percent grade, just to make it, um, accessible.
So it's a, 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 like a lawn ramp? Is that what's going on there? Okay.
Gets you to the front wall. Uh, sorry.
And what's the height of the front lines, Steve, about the, um, the shallow sidewalk?
Along the building, it's elevation one two nine at the south east corner. And the road is elevation one hundred, so it's like, almost three.
Yeah, so it, it looks like the retaining wall on the east property line, east of the sidewalk, um, on the front facing side of the building would be about two and a half feet tall. And then the second wall would be.
The wall right here.
Yeah.
This is the southeast corner. It is about one point five.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, at the end of the lawn ramp, what, what is the elevation there?
One oh two point one.
One oh two, so it goes up two?
It goes up from one hundred to one oh one.
Oh, one one.
Yeah, so that's just that one, the end of the ramp.
No.
Yeah. It's different than.
Different number.
Unfortunately.
Mine, mine says one oh two point one.
It's at the end of the ramp or corner.
I think that's, that's just like a visual that we're trying to understand. I don't know if you guys have done an east elevations. Do you have any east elevations?
I have some.
Oh, that'd be helpful.
And I, a question, um, and so was that, is that all driven, um, not the front part, but the, um, north side of the building, that, is that all driven by the architecture? Meaning using the, what's now the basement as the entrance?
As, as Nick described it, it was to provide handicap accessibility.
I understand that, but the other way you could do it is if you left it at grade and there was, and the ramp went up to, I mean, I guess it's, is it just not possible? Instead of coming from the street down, if it was going from the street up after the building was raised twenty-four inches to what's the main level?
So we went through a tremendous amount of alternatives on this sort of entryway idea, and there's, uh, complications in terms of coming up to the floor level and the elevator requiring like, uh, you'd stop like within a couple of feet, and it was, got super complicated until I speak to that.
The distance to cover or in order to keep it, um, the slope of the ramp within, you know, it's not long enough. It would be much longer than going down two feet that we're doing. And so then you'd need a, you need a retaining wall going the other way and railing. And also, if I could say, the retaining walls and the raising of the grade is part of the, uh, requirements that were uh, communicated by the Mass Historic Commission. In order to keep the appearance of the elevation, the proportions of the elevation, and the relationship of elevation to grade, um, as they are now, we have to bring up the grade to to match the current situation.
So that's really helpful information for us. Where are you in your process with Mass Historic? Cause they are going to really like drive a lot of the design choices.
Yes, um, I don't want to say we're in constant conversation, but we are in conversation with them throughout the process. Um, we have a consultant, uh, who works, communicates for us to Mass Historic. Um, one of the project managers from Mass Historic is very familiar with the project. Um, and we've thrown out questions as we go along.
In, in terms of the concept that is presented in this application package, what's there? Have they generally endorsed it or?
Yes.
Okay. So that I think.
Also, the National Park Service is part of, um, it's a funding source.
Yeah.
So they have reviewed, um, part of, part of this design. They have reviewed through the previous, um, stabilization project that's not going underway. Um, so those, this project sort of has been thoroughly vetted. That's good to know about how that's driving the great changes.
Right.
That's good for the CBA.
Programmatically, it works really well too. Cause you enter one level of the building and to get through it, you have to go through all three levels. If you're in there in the middle, kind of caught in between.
Um, Steve, was there anything else that you wanted to point out from a site standpoint? I have a question for you about drainage, because we have approved a similar sort of entry sequence where our basement level door was made a principal door, and with that sloping ramp, and with the kind of wild rainstorms we get anymore, um, I've seen at that location, they've actually had to sandbag the door. And we had the conversation with the design engineer at that point in time, not anyone from your firm. Um, and they were like, no, no, everything's fine, but we observed that they're seeing some flooding at their door. So I'm just curious if you've accounted for that, if they're using porous pavers or anything to like give more capacity for drainage at that location to prevent any flooding.
So it's definitely a complicated situation, right? Um, I'll just put it all down. Like it's built and suspended or something more.
It looked like your basement floor is a little higher than your plaza level.
There's no, yeah, it shouldn't be the one before that one that you had. So we're proposing all sorts of drainage as much as, and we're also going to heat that plaza so it doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Uh, this one here, Tobias, yeah. Uh, um, so, and then, so we have a, a trench drain at the bottom of our ramp. We have two catch basins in that area, which are all lower than the.
Yeah.
Floor. We have a trench drain at the door.
Yeah.
Also putting on a pump system in case any one of those pipes gets plugged.
Okay.
It's backup, so like it would, uh, it would be running by gravity. If something happened, it got plugged, the pump will turn on, and that's going to discharge to the town drainage higher than anything else. So aside from doing all that, I'm not sure.
No, 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 that, I didn't look at that level of detail.
It's a very good question. It's a challenge.
Yeah, and so the pump system is only a backup system, the, um, the catch basins can blow by gravity into the town, okay.
So this, it's the next one down.
It's okay, I understand. I'm, thank you. Thank you for indulging me that.
No, that's a great, you have four surface drains over here. So, I mean, it looks ridiculous, but I have the same concern. We have a trench drain at the bottom of the ramp, trench drain at both doors, and then two catch basins that are lower than all of that. And then the pump, we have a pump chamber that's going inside one of those catch basins that have a high level of flow before it goes to the building, the pump, out to the, out to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't go into the manhole, but you're putting in the, the back there?
Uh, no, I think actually we're going to run it all the way out, um, to here, just cause I don't want anything to get.
So the manhole that's in the sidewalk now, is that storm sore?
It is, um, yes, we are not using that because the elevations don't work.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, H V A C units, are there intending to be any outside the building?
Okay, obviously. Yeah, there's a yes and no answer. So worst case scenario, I'm, that we're envisioning. Apologies for the wide scrolling. So because of the tight site and also because of Mass Historic's, um, restrictions, um, there's no opportunity or ability to put H E C units directly next to the building or on the elevations. So the only, um, point that we have currently is the roof of the entry edition, with that black shaded area here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm saying this with a caveat that, the plan is in the, the proposal actually is to use geothermal energy for, for cooling, which would eliminate any exterior H E C compressors or anything.
Geothermal?
Yes. Um, the only, it's a caveat because we'll only fully know whether it's possible as we start going. So theoretically it is possible. We've laid out the number of wells. We're only using it for cooling, so it'll, it's relatively, is lower than it would be for heating. Um, so, um, in, in the best case, that screening area up here that we're showing will actually not exist.
Do you know where the wells are then?
Yeah. They're going, there's only four. Um, so there's some on the front lawn and then some under our, under our ramp. Or a lot that way, sorry. So if you see the site, they have to have a, you know, certain distance from the building. There isn't really a lot of room left, but there's a few here, and I think there's a few, a few here. That's why we can only, also only use it for cooling and for heating, because that site wouldn't allow us to do that.
The geothermal wells, uh, do they have a wellhead? It's probably the ground or?
No, it's not, not invisible.
If condensing units do need to go on the roof, I, I mean, we, just given the proximity to the neighbor to the east, I believe that's a residential unit above a garage, right? It's a, that little red building, it's got a. No, it's got a, I'm pretty sure it has an E U button. Or something else.
It looks like your garage.
It, it is a garage at the first floor for sure, but I believe there's an apartment.
I think it may be an office, I'm not sure, but it, there is some space.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in terms of any noise that would be generated, if it can be shielded, screened, dampened.
These things are so quiet now.
Yes and no. I have one right outside my office window and it's not as quiet.
It was a new one.
It's brand new, one year old. It still makes a little bit annoying. Not really, actually, but we don't need to get into that. Um, light, since you're here.
Yeah.
Why do we need uplight? Why can we not achieve some beautiful illumination with downlighting?
Um, it's our lighting designers understanding that to get the effect of illuminating the belfry, we need a couple of small uplights, and they would only be operational from dusk till about eleven P M or earlier. Um, and that's all. At this far as looking at locations and kind of the performance aspect, exhibit six in the application.
Yes.
Plan and that was actually, we replaced the plan because, uh, I replaced the plan yesterday with a, with an amended document.
Mm-hmm.
That showed, reflecting of the actual and technical plan it, but anyway, that's kind of irrelevant. Point is like, the plan which hasn't changed shows the location of the lighting, which is in the north, north, the
Mm-hmm.
Fortunes of the, the yard there, so those two locations, it's just two. Um, and then the, the downlighting for emergency purposes on the south side.
I guess.
It would be on the ground shining the sun.
The uplights, that's where they're.
From the ground.
Yeah.
We're not supportive of uplighting, just in general. Um, and this is a little, this isn't like right in town where it's very lit and. Even there, we haven't like been letting people just put in more uplighting because we're so overlit. I, I would really ask you to think uh, about talking to your lighting designer and see if they could come up with an alternative. Can something be backlit? Can it be, can lighting, you know, can it create a soft glow within the valve rather than having uplighting? Because we have not been supportive of that. You can seek permit for it, but we really wanna understand like what the reasoning. Why there's no other alternative.
And the um, uh, the waiver for the downlight. Is because of the uh, uh, small setback, there's no way to have downlight.
And that's residential to the um, south as well, right? I mean, the fixture did look like a good cutoff. So that one, I think is a good selection, so thank you. Um, do we have any more sort of general comments or do we wanna look at ten point five? Yes, provision.
So was this ever part of the underground road or anything? I've never been in the building, but the basement, there's a sanctuary stair that's going down from the basement line or? Where's that going?
The, the stair that at the east end of this sanct, former sanctuary was put in in nineteen forty-nine when the church was dug out again.
And, and it's going down?
Yeah, it goes down.
When they, they created a, turned the crawlways into a basement.
Going down from the basement according to the drawings.
Is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at the basement, existing basement plan that says that the basement stairs are going down. Which is very confusing.
There's no, there's nothing.
Right, thank you. And the water. And any other sort of general questions and we can, we can look at ten point five?
Well, it certainly has a, a general question about. Um, I mean, just walked over there yesterday. I mean, the sidewalk there is all new.
Yeah.
And they're gonna take it away. And which basically means that people would have to walk in the street. And we're focused on making things walkable and obviously the town just took a lot of money and they're putting in that sidewalks. So there's gotta be an alternative where you don't have the fact that I'm a sidewalk. Well, according to that sidewalk, we'd net.
It ends.
It leaves to the end. I don't know how many people use it, it's probably not heavily trafficked, but the town thought it was worth the money to put in a sidewalk. And now you, you're gonna force people into the street, which I don't want.
But Chris, do you have any um, insight into why that small segment of sidewalk looks like?
I can't recall if there was a sidewalk there that was existing and replaced as part of the downtown street work. Where we redid railroad street, Elm Street, Elm Court. So there may have just been an old one that was just replaced. It may not have been a conscious decision to build a new sidewalk there. May have just been a replacement project wide without too much thought, but there's no sidewalk on there, that's correct.
Right, because there is a parking court for that adjacent building.
Well, there's some other buildings.
Right, yeah, I mean, that, that's part of, I, I, I share your concern about the sidewalk um, in terms of, are we? Are there people that live in that neighborhood? Who may not have access to a car who use the sidewalk network? And that's why I was curious what your engagement had been with the community, if you've gotten any feedback on that issue. Is that a concern that we need to be thinking about a potential solution for?
Well, I mean, our communications has been through the town planner. And. I think our understanding that the, for the purposes proposed, there's order to be. Amendmental to considering um. Proposal to do with sidewalk integration, the license application. I mean, the, the longer term, which is somewhat relative. And it's not a long, long term, it is a short line term, is to um. Acquire title for this piece of property from the town. Okay, so that it becomes incorporated into the site in the long term. And there's no longer this kind of temporary, you know, relationship, if you will, um, for this piece of the property. So um, you know, there's a process, we talked with town planner about what that process is. Uh, we're very well informed about what that is and I think it's in our contention very soon. Um, uh, to bring that proposal forward because ideally, we don't want there to be. Too much of a lapse in uh, time between, you know, play food for the project and, and acquiring title. And our name, so, so that is the long term intent, you know, as far as the sidewalk. Right, ceasing to exist, it is kind of the sidewalk to nowhere, road ends, the road tracks are at the end of it. Uh, and um. You know, there's effectively, um, you know, nowhere to go otherwise. I don't think how that.
We are very supportive and we are thrilled to see an important historic building getting the attention that it is getting. And we are also concerned about, you know, equity in terms, not only of saving important buildings, but also. Moving the people that live in our community around. And so I think it's, it's, we're just sidewalks. Or something we're interested in, in a funny quirky way. Um, and eliminating one is sort of antithetical to what we would normally um, want to recommend, so.
Cause it's definitely a way. I mean, it's not a, I mean, I, I used to be. I used to be there a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And I mean, when Co-op was there, it was definitely driven.
Right.
And when Versumon Yoga was there, I mean, that was driven and walked a lot. I mean, I know the sidewalk doesn't anyway, but.
Yeah.
Due to people or cars still.
I mean, I recognize the space constraint here.
And I know the road on the east side is very narrow. I mean, there's a parking lot, parking on the side of the. Um, the property on the other side of the street, but. Like, right now, like cars are traveling at, it's a place to walk where the cars aren't traveling. And so. I mean, I don't, I haven't been there since, you know, in a while.
Chris.
And so.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just curious what the use is like.
I don't know. I wondered if we had any information from previous sidewalk surveys that. We've, it's been a while since we've done a sidewalk survey. But was that, maybe we could check and, and get back. I mean, we're making a recommendation to the CBA. So we could certainly provide additional comment to the CBA.
What would you like to know?
I would like to know if that section of sidewalk or, or Elm Court in general was um, commented on last time we did a sidewalk survey.
There was a.
There was not one there?
So maybe we install a curved sidewalk for drainage purposes as part of the project. I'm not sure. And also a lot of the parking around there is, is on the west side of the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
People, people park there and they'd be coming down, probably cross over to the railroad tracks, come down, walk down that way.
I don't know how much parking is used there. I don't have a good sense of that.
We're talking about on the other side of the river.
Yeah.
Yes. If you could just say your name for Ken's record.
My name is Janie Sills and I'm the project manager for the DuBois Freedom Center. So I spent a lot of time on the site and sitting on the front porch talking to our neighbor, my friend. And, and I would say that I would encourage you to look at the traffic because the carby traffic that I see is from the Berkshire Bank parking lot. There's a little thing right there, up through the middle of the street, mostly on the other side of the street, past the houses. Um, I don't think the sidewalk, it was not there, I think you're, is, is correct as I recall. There is a lot of water coming off that hill, so that could have been a drainage issue. But I think the street is used more than the sidewalk and. Uh, even since it's been, so worth looking at.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other things before we go through the site plan criteria and just see if there's any other commentary that comes out of that? No, we'll do ten point five, we'll go through. Um, so our intention is to go through the ten point five criteria. Um, to see if there are any other site plan related items, we would like to get more information from you on or we have questions on. Um, and as Chris mentioned, we have typically not granted site plan approval tonight. We would wait and have you come back after your special permit, in the event that through that process, there are site related changes that get made. All right.
To those sidewalk questions, this is an old street view of Elm Court.
Okay.
So the sidewalking question that exists now is here. On the uh, sort of south edge of Elm Court, it wasn't there before.
And on the screen, it says that image was from October twenty nineteen. Okay.
So is it possible to find out why the sidewalk was put there?
Okay, thank you, Chris.
So what is that curb? Is that?
This is all part of the town right away. It's, it's not actually a parcel of land, part of the.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And Elm Court, uh, on the other side, as, as we go around the corner, that's wider. It's not. I, I, I know it's not down the corner, I understand that, but. Uh, what it means now is if someone's in a wheelchair and they're going on the sidewalk, they're saying. Too bad, now you have to go into the street to get around it.
And it's full of puddles. I hope no one is having to traverse that with any sort of ambulatory assistance. Um, all right, so we'll look at ten point five. Um, number one is minimize the volume of cuts and fills, the number of removed trees, six inches caliper or larger. The length of removed stone walls, the area of wetland vegetation, the extent of storm water flow increase. Um, soil erosion, uh, soil erosion and threat of air and water pollution. Um. I assume you're gonna have to take some material offsite, so there'll be some material that gets hauled off.
Yeah, although uh, that. It's not too far off.
It's closed, isn't it? Okay, all right.
And is there retaining wall on the south side?
Yes, well, yeah, in order to get to a set of stairs on the southwest portion of the building, we have a very low, something like.
I'm just concerned because you're changing the grade there and there's an existing house that's like six feet away.
Yeah, we analyzed all that. The water currently flows to a slight low point in between the two and goes to the street. And it's gonna do the exact same thing in the future, so if you walk coming down, if the slope away from the. Building we're talking about, the house here is connected.
So there's like a slight swale between the two buildings?
It's not very defined, but that's.
And that's how it's gonna work in the future as well.
Yeah, we're putting a catch basin in on the southwest corner of the building that will collect. Some trapped drainage that's trapped now to fix that current issue. Um, and then you're going east will remain. Also, um, the building is a silver root that this summer um, is gonna be equipped with cutters.
Okay.
And now spouts that you're gonna tie into the drainage system, so that'll also reduce the runoff, people's surface run.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions on item one? No, I'm sorry, no. Okay, so then number two, maximize accessibility and pedestrian and vehicular safety. Both on the site and accessing and exiting the site. I think we've had a fair amount of discussion on that particular topic. It does, right? It's a challenge if it's an existing building to try and provide for accessibility to the actual restored structure. There may be a trade-off in terms of um, removal of a small segment of sidewalk. Um, do we have any other commentary?
Accessibility as for trees.
What?
That's part of pedestrian safety.
Yeah, I think that's pedestrian safety.
Both on and off the site. Right, well, pedestrian safety both on and off the site, that's true thing.
For number two, we're maximizing accessibility and pedestrian and vehicular safety. So I think, I don't foresee that we need any additional information there at this time.
And so the curb is still there though, right?
There's still curb.
For the water, if that's why the sidewalk was installed, to help control the water from the hill.
Right, Steve, you just show a curb on the north side of the.
The, that curb exists.
Yeah.
And that's true.
Okay, is that, clear that up for your turn? Okay, um, number three, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. I don't think that one applies.
That change?
Uh, number four, minimize visual intrusion by controlling the visibility of parking, storage and other outdoor service areas. Viewed from public ways or premises, residentially used or zoned. So we talked about the HVAC units, garbage?
Garbage is um, there's no exterior storage.
So there's an interior space and curbside pickup at some point or something?
I believe so, yes.
Do, do we know what happens there? Yeah, do you know, like, what do the neighbors use? Do they just have a, a garbage service that comes by and?
She wants to know how it's gonna, how you're gonna get rid of the garbage?
I'm not a hundred percent certain what it was or more what the neighbors did. I think it's been empty since twenty fourteen.
But you have a plan for how, how you're gonna deal with it, regardless of that?
I don't know.
Our application sets. Disposed of by commercial.
Yeah, I would think.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, let's see, number five, minimize glare from headlights, minimize light glare into the night sky. Minimize overspill into adjacent properties. Uh, we've talked about overspill into adjacent properties. They've got a, a down egress light. I think they are minimizing it. Glare into the night sky, that's. That's an issue. I, I mean, I'm, I'm not ready to support uplighting.
Nor am I.
Um, and then I don't think we have a minimized glare from headlights issue. Right? Number six, minimize unreasonable departure from the character materials and scale of the buildings in the vicinity as viewed from public ways and, and places. Um, so restoration of a building, it is going to be raised, it's being raised twenty-four inches, right? So not as much as the flying church.
Or within zoning.
And within zoning, yeah, that's true.
Is it older than the other buildings, Steve?
Uh, the exterior cladding is gonna be, um, twice the exterior cladding is shake again, cedar shake or?
Yeah, restoring to existing.
Okay.
It's from the Shaw ship lap on the sides.
It's uh, shakes at the gate walls and ship lap on the main floor. If you wanna see an exhibit, that'd be obviously. Showing how the twenty centuries is. We are, we are against history. Yeah.
Um, no, I know it is. Maybe she wants it.
Is it number five?
No, it's actually, this is um, just a handout for tonight. I was just wondering if there are any questions.
Oh, okay, oh, great.
Just kind of a compare.
So it's basically. You could have saved yourself a half an hour, but you're just pulling at it. Okay, all right, that's helpful, thank you. Um, one more left. Uh, so we don't have any concerns about the character and character materials or scale of the building. Um, number seven, minimize contamination from groundwater on, uh, from onsite waste water disposal systems. Or operations on the premises involving the used storage handling or containment of hazardous substances, I think that one applies. Um, ensure compliance with the provisions of the zoning bylaw including parking and landscaping. Um. And you can come back with a planting plan when you uh, get to site plan review. We've got like a schematic from Walter and it kind of gives like materiality, uh, but not like specific thick plants. Yeah, it's just like. Yeah, it's just like purple shrubs, purple ground cover.
You guys would like a system of.
When you get to that stage, yeah. Okay, uh, anything else? No? So, um, if there are no further questions on this, um, I guess we can.
We have to, uh, if you want to choose your questions, we submit all sorts.
There was a request to waive the traffic and the stormwater, um, studies for both.
So do we have any problems with that?
I I I I think the V C O D, um, parking requirement, um. Gives us the flexibility related to parking, which is going to directly impact the driven traffic piece. There's already some, uh, auto use through Elm Court. Um, but it sounds like the objective is to provide for access primarily by foot.
By foot or bus?
Yeah, so I I don't feel like we need to have a traffic study. Does anyone else feel differently?
Is the bus, is the bus gonna unload at the, at the site or is it unloading somewhere else in town?
I wouldn't wanna take a bus from Rossiter through the parking lot or down to Elm Court, so personally, I I'm guessing that they're. Load off somewhere else.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, like, is this generating, is it generating any traffic?
For traffic, I mean, that's.
Well, yeah, I know, but for traffic study, right?
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, I guess it's people walking around interfering with the.
Jeremy, you didn't comment that there were no bike racks.
Hey, well, I know, because people are walking here. We have the bikes in town.
Okay, um, so we're comfortable waving the, um, I don't think we've normally done that as a motion, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I I I'm not sure we've done it before, so do we need to formally waive the requirement?
It's been less formal.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt to take a motion.
Okay. Okay, and then the second one was with regard to stormwater, um, it's an existing impervious cover. There's a little bit of additional, but from what I've read so far, I think the engineers got it covered in terms of stormwater management.
Seems, I mean, the gutters are gonna help, but.
So, um, are we all fine?
Yes, I would entertain a motion to waive both the, um, stormwater and traffic provisions in ten point four.
But aren't we gonna?
Ten point five, sorry.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Pedro and a second by Malcolm. Do we have any further discussion?
So the only question I have is, um, if it, if the special permit is approved with. Changes to the site. Would we have to go back and do this again? So like, so if the landscaping is significantly changed, let's say, from, right, or other parts of the site. Do we need to, are we gonna need to revisit this anyway?
Uh, I I would anticipate it would be a much more cursory review when they come back. Looking only at the things that are new since the time since tonight, so I don't think we have to reopen stormwater.
So I'm just.
I mean, it's conceivable. I think you can deal with it at the time.
Okay, there's nothing in.
If there's substantial changes, the board would be, it's, you know, it would be okay to re- uh, require it.
Okay.
So Kim, I'm sorry, I had said the wrong section. It's ten point five point three, the supplemental requirements that we're gonna waive the traffic and. Um, stormwater provision from, so we have a motion and a second. Um, do we have any discussion, any further discussion? Um, doesn't look like we have any comments for anyone, so all in favor, any opposed? Weave those provisions, um, so the next item would be, um, uh, to send a positive recommendation. To the zoning board with deals for the special permit application.
So I'm a second.
So we've got a motion from Pedro and a second from Jeremy. Any discussion on this?
I have a problem with that because you're basically endorsing that, you know, the use is wonderful and I think what they're doing is great. But you're endorsing this particular plan where you're giving away the sidewalk and I'm not ready to. To send a positive recommendation or mass.
Um, would you consider, um, modifying the recommendation with a a review of? I don't know, what 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 information do you feel like you would need to better understand? Whether or not the loss of that section of sidewalk is detrimental to that part of the neighborhood?
I just feel it is.
But that's a feeling, like, how do we get data to that?
I I think we have this agreement here, if we just had the vote, alright?
I feel it is.
Yeah, I feel it is in too.
I think it's a balancing too, right? It's a balancing of like, what do you lose versus what do you gain?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm really against getting rid of any sidewalks, but. In this case, like, the amount of sidewalk that there is and that it doesn't connect to anything, it's just. Now the connection just ends a little sooner or the disconnection ends a little sooner.
Just, um, if I could, Brandy, ask the applicant or the. Appliance engineer architect, what would the alternative be if on the north side, there wasn't a strip of landscaping, but instead the sidewalk remained? How would you treat that? Would there have to be a railing? On the top of the retaining wall, would there have to be another dry stack stone containing wall? To keep people from the sidewalk from falling down into that sunken plaza? What are the possible alternatives?
We did analyze all these options, um, and essentially we would need to rail. The other issue is that it would make the wall taller four feet, it would be, uh, a structure and it would be. On the property line essentially at that point, and it would, and it would make the zoning setback non-conformity. Less.
So you'd create more non-conformity?
In order to do that, because right now, in order to get the wall four feet, we have to slope slightly down to it so that, you know, the sidewalk is sloping up from the road. I will say, I've been on that road a lot and I've never seen anybody walking on the sidewalk. They're always walking on the road and I've seen people with their dogs walking on the road. And it's just anecdotal, I'm witness to that.
You weren't there today.
I drove by.
I I did walk on it.
So, yes, Johnny, uh, keeping the sidewalk there is very complicated when railings and building go issues and whatnot, so that's why.
And was there anything with, um, master store regarding that? No.
Thank you to Brandy's point of always rather see there is. Blank retaining wall with a railing or some nice vegetation.
Uh, just to to put right, I think the applicant's perspective on this, you know, I think. It's been sensitive to and aware of the fact that, uh, it's not. The first policy of the town to eliminate sidewalk anywhere, but, um. So, so, you know, we're aware of that fact, but as Brandy said, I think it really is, uh. How we've looked at it, you know, overall, there's a balancing about kind of benefit cost analysis that has been done. And the benefit, um, in facilitating the project is significant again. Uh, I think we perceive the cost of the town and for that, you know, the loss, if you will, that section of the sidewalk to be. Not as significant, um, and then it's not as if this was an oversight or an over. Look rather, uh, a situation where recently installed sidewalk that. I guess I would say arguably serves a limited purpose, but I I think reasonably serves a limited purpose. And so I need to be used for a much better purpose. Um, and allow the project to move forward in this manner and address a lot of the other issues with that site. So, from our perspective, balancing the cost versus the benefit. Being the applicant, I think we certainly feel that the benefit far, far, far outweighs the cost of the town and I think we're fairly confident that the board will agree with that. And we see this like we're on Monday, so we'll know when.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second and we've been discussing a lot. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in paper, aye, any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, alright, thank you very much.
And we haven't dealt with the.
We have not dealt with.
Lighting waivers.
We have not dealt with lighting waivers and we have. Do we need to make a finding on lighting right now?
Oh, yeah, that's great, Z B A.
Yeah, yeah, the Z B A is the grant.
I mean, I I personally would prefer to give applicant time to have a conversation with their lighting consultant to see if they've got a suitable alternative. Um, at this point, my personal feeling is that we should not grant a lighting waiver for off lighting.
Agreed. So, uh, should we send a recommendation, Z B A, that we recommend a waiver for the downward lighting attached to the buildings?
On the south side of the building.
I'm so moved.
Okay, so we've got a move.
A recommendation of Z B A to grant the special permit to the, uh, side lighting, but not to be upward lighting.
It's the south elevation, I think.
Yeah.
So.
Super motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, aye, any opposed? You're a nay?
I'm a nay.
Okay, so we have four ayes, Kim, and one nay, just as we did the last time. With different people, just to keep it fresh.
Do you want to?
I think, did I miss any other motions for this?
I don't think so.
Okay, then we are all set here for now. Thank you. Good luck with the flight door and the zoning board, thank you. Yep.
And so that, that vast go to that go with the, with the, um, recommendation for them to come up with alternatives.
We're especially for my grant. In a sense, granting that authority to them on.
I see, so then they'll. But we send it with a comment to, actually some sort of alternative so that they can like.
I think we'll, we'll see, right? Good evening, have a good night, thanks, guys. Thank you, have a good evening, thank you. Good night. We're gonna let Jackie rejoin us and we do have more on our agenda, so if folks could go.
John, I think the.
That'd be helpful.
Sidewalk is like, I don't know if there will ever be, like, there would ever be a connection to Rossiter Street with the sidewalk. That's why, like, I was.
That looks pretty rude, that is ridiculous.
It always was ridiculous when it was really trapped.
Doesn't, it doesn't.
I'm gonna ask that we table this topic and focus on our agenda so that we can finish our meeting this evening. Cause we've had a lot of good discussion and I think.
Really, that is just really good.
Thank you, good night. Alright, moving on to our next item, so we have zoning amendments, finalizing the zoning amendments regarding. Uh, co-housing, oh, we left it on the agenda, it's for housing, okay. Uh, permissions for residential development in various zones and landscaping, so, um, we received some comment. Yes, please.
I I got an email, uh, last week from somebody, I'm not, I'm not sure who this person was, I'm sorry. And, uh, they provided me with some ways to look at what is co-housing and what is co-living. And, uh, they strongly recommended that the proper definition of what the board is considering here as co-housing is actually better termed co-living. Um, co-housing is something where, uh, there's a site and individuals have on that site. Individual homes that are fully, you know, that are full homes with complete facilities. An intentional, fully intentional community that each home can be self-contained or you can interact with others, that's co-housing. And so if I was corrected and and you pointed out that the proper terminology here for what the board is considering should be. Co-living, so I think the board should change it.
Find and replace co-housing with co-living, is everybody okay with that?
Sure.
I I following that email, I don't know if you went and looked, but yeah, it is, it's like a Danish model of. Like, community living as opposed to like in an individual building, so.
I I'd like to build, bring up a, um. What I think is a major problem with the way we're structuring this. As I went through and read through the definition and the bylaw. It looks to me like anybody who wants to build an apartment. Could build an apartment, build it anywhere in town by right and call it co- co-living. Because there's nothing in here that, uh.
Prevents you.
Prevents somebody from building a building with self-contained apartments in it and just calling it co-living and building it anywhere by right.
Because we don't preclude it having a kitchen and a bathroom.
We took, we took out that provision that required a common kitchen or required a common bathroom.
And then if we wrote it a different way, you could have one with a, with a separate kitchen.
The only thing that might restrict it is stated in the purpose, but that's.
Well, in the definition, though, you don't think the definition covers that?
The definition says.
Residential building.
May be shared with other residents.
We could change made shell.
So maybe even.
But it's good to put these things down and take a fresh look at them, I mean.
Asked today and saying, okay, what would restrict somebody?
Well, so I mean, that was a comment that we had with the select board. Uh, meeting, like, what limits, so there is still the underlying zone that limits the bulk, right?
Well, there's a density limit.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's what's gonna limit the number of units that are in a property, but this is. This means that, uh, uh, I I, the way I read this, that, uh, anybody wanted to build a multi-unit building. Anywhere, if they call it co-living, they can do it by.
The practical outcome is if you had a large enough parcel in R two and R four zone, you could build hundreds and hundreds of units. But I can call it co.
Parking in the back forty, would that be a bad thing?
Yeah, I know, I kind of feel like.
Well, it's certainly not with your R two and R four. And you're gonna do it on the suspect system?
Well, I mean, I think that's it. I think there are like practicalities that do.
Our practicalities, and then there's your intention, what is your intention?
And it was, it did seem in our joint meeting, at least some of the members, that kind of thing, it did seem to be a concern.
Wait, what kind of thing?
It's like this, like, no limits, no limits on the number of units that would take place exactly in, like, the R four, even though it doesn't.
I don't know if that's entirely true, though.
But is it in both the zoning and like real life? You know, circumstance creates the limits, that's the thing. Okay, the R two and the R four, you cannot build nine or more units. It's a no, it's not a special permit, it's a no, but with co-living, we're saying it's a yes. Well. Then maybe the change that you're seeking should come from the table of uses. I'm 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 just pointing out, uh, what I consider to be a conflict in.
But, but I.
Trying to do versus what.
So, let's think about that, though, because the, we just started talking about this in terms of. Um, the windflower, which is in R four, I think. Yeah, so I mean, I don't wanna preclude R four necessarily. Yeah, so I mean, I don't want to preclude R four necessarily. I mean, that's that's how we started this conversation.
But why would a developer choose to do co-living? Presuming, presuming.
I think that's the end of your question.
Are in it for the money.
How is co-living going to give you more money than building units?
You're gonna build exactly the same units and you're gonna call it co-living instead of apartments.
Yeah, but this is this type of, this type of accommodation is so tough. Then first a pencil in and then.
So Pedro, though, I think, you know, there is a point, right? So I think one of our versions had a a minimum and a maximum. For our unit, is that right? Per unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, early on we had a maximum.
I mean, does it make sense?
Have the minimum of one fifteen that usable.
Right.
Didn't say, it didn't say a maximum.
It didn't. You're looking at the red line.
No, it never said.
Oh.
That wasn't one of the ones that.
No, I was thinking square footage.
Because when we start, when the first draft of this came to you, the use table didn't say yes across the board. That's what we told.
And windflower has it's a freestanding house, right?
I understand that, I'm sorry, Jeremy. I understand that there are practical limits to what you can build, but if you put a proposal with no limits to town. That's that's my opinion. Not not without controls. They are too. But we essentially got. I don't see why you can't propose something that you have. We've listed the limits per unit. We listed the requirement for lot area per unit. We got that lifted at the town meeting, so to say that we can't get something passed like that. But I think it's probably a concern that you should consider very, very closely. That's my recommendation.
I mean, I, if if we, it's tell me you were to pass this as if we were to have a building conflict in our in our bylaw. And I I don't see why a builder who wanted to make money wouldn't build exactly what they wanted wherever they wanted it and call it co-living.
I think, I mean, I get what you're saying, but I also think there's, there's a price point that you're going to be limited to.
Why? There's no price point here. I charge it two thousand a month and call it co-living.
If you only have a bedroom and a shared bathroom, you're not gonna get.
There's nothing in here that prevents you.
All right. So I'm very glad that you have looked at this fresh and and are looking at it again.
Yeah.
Do you have thoughts on limitations?
To tell you the truth, this my thoughts on this came around two thirty this afternoon.
That you had in a.
Do not have any solutions to this. Think that special permits across the board would would then put a rain on co-living. It's by right, but I I do believe that if we put special permits.
I feel like that's a huge verb in a different direction.
I don't, I don't, because I I say co-living should be special, not everything.
Part of what we were talking about was, you know, the appeals process and trying to make this kind of housing portable. And when we add a special permit to it, we add a lot of costs to it.
What about just the the first paragraph? In which facilities such as bathrooms, dining rooms, kitchens, and laundry facilities are shared with other residents.
All of them? I mean, you can't then have a a co-living saying with.
You could. You could add a line that said units or sleeping quarters with kitchens, dining rooms, and individual individual kitchens, dining rooms, laundry facilities are not co-living. I mean, you could add a what is it not?
So this is.
But you don't want to take away because at the windflower, for instance, that they have, I mean, there are a couple of units that are actually houses.
This is why. This is why I was was wondering about two different bylaws or, you know, one for reuse and one for new construction. Because because a lot of like the way that we're kind of dancing around things is because we don't want to preclude the reuse of existing buildings for co-living and but we have very real ideas of what we would like if somebody were to build it from scratch. We're like, you know, we want, you know, individual bathrooms, right? But let's say, but we don't want to preclude co-living from happening in an existing structure because of like that one, you know, that one bathroom that has to be, you know, too bad or whatever. So that's like, we keep doing this dance around because we have, we're trying to make, you know, new construction and pre and reuse, you know, one thing.
Fit in the same.
Like, like a lot of it could be the same. But, you know, and then and and I, with what Chris is saying, I, you know, I think maybe, you know, I don't, I don't, I I really don't agree with the a special permit across the board. But maybe some limitations in, you know, the R two and R four, and maybe some upper, I mean, maybe we do need some upper cap on new construction or whatever.
The upper cap is going to be set by the underlying zoning.
But when you're talking about.
R two and R four, you're talking about.
Big swaths of property, right? Where you could conceivably have a big piece of property and put a lot there.
You guys really think that that's realistic?
I don't know. You know, I mean, there's the golf course right next to, you know, a village center, not our village center, but.
What? That golf course is privately owned.
Well, I know.
It also has a lot of constraints on it. It's all wetlands. There's like five.
Good buildable acres.
So let him put a building out there. What's the problem with that?
Uh, I don't know. I don't know how it's gonna be done, who would do it or.
I mean, I I why, let's suss this out. Why would it be bad? It would give people access to a extensive property with lots of walking trails. That might be actually really high quality of life.
Okay, so then let's open up the R two and R four for multi-family units.
Well, I sort of agree with you there, but that's not what.
Well, that's what that is what. Because if we pass this. That means people.
Multi-individual.
If we pass this as it is, somebody could buy that the Edgar and golf course and put up a thousand units. By right. On five acres, however many.
But you're not, that's not realistic. And I think that that's honestly just like a fear-mongering thing to say. And I don't think that's constructive for a conversation to have with the community. And maybe you're just testing some arguments, so I appreciate it.
I think that's a flaw in this.
Okay, so I'm asking you what your suggestions are, and if your only suggestion is special. Then I think that's a non-starter.
Somebody else can love with the suggestion. If it is a conflict, it's got to be resolved.
Okay, but is there? If there's a.
My solution is we require a special permits for the entire.
My, my question is if we take this proposal and make it for reuse, like tweak it a little bit, make it for reuse, and then revisit the new construction co-living. Next time.
I mean, we've got, we have regulations in the books right now that have have regulations specifically for new construction, specifically for existing buildings. So there's no reason why you can just add language to what they already have.
Okay, I mean, that too. I mean, if we have the time, because I would like to see this the co-living go through this cycle. And I don't want to.
So, okay, hold on. We don't have any time. This is why we have to fix this tonight. So if in the definition. We have to, we have to fix it tonight.
Put a final draft up. Public hearing.
Subtle things, subtle things. But if we're like changing the table uses, I I don't think that's, I don't want to do something like that at town meeting, you know, make a change like that. So. Okay, so we're all agreed that we're gonna change co-housing and co-living, yes? Awesome. What if for the definition, we say in the last sentence where we're talking about facilities must be shared with other residents?
But that sounds like they all must be shared.
Or just are are sure.
I suggested are before. You guys seemed tepid about it. So I'm suggesting must as a stronger word.
So.
Or or we say dining room, kitchen, and laundry must be shared, bathrooms.
So they can't have in on suite kitchens?
No. And I think that was good feedback that we got from some of the housing partners we talked to, saying that having that shared kitchen is part of what helps build community.
Some of the buildings that are being altered here have.
Some of the, some of the units might.
So Brandy, what's, what's the problem with just making the R four and the R two special permit? Well, because we've already got windflower there and. They can exist and.
Yeah, I mean, they're an in right now.
They're not, they wouldn't even be called in this because they've already opened up under their.
Yeah, they've been operating under, I mean, that's your point, but they can come in and.
I I don't usually do this, but I strongly recommend that the R two and R four are just special permitted.
I mean, I don't think anything wrong with that.
That makes everybody happy. Fine.
Malcolm does that.
It's not, it's not bad. I just, I don't know that we can craft that tonight.
Dancing, we we're dancing around it so much, like when we were coming up with things, when we were talking about, because we wanted to, we really want to see reuse, you know, and this seems like a good option for reuse that we haven't even thought about. And but when we were, we seemed to be wanting specific things if somebody was gonna build it.
Chris, I hear what Jeremy's saying. I hear what you're saying. I just don't know how we flip that around tonight.
The use table you could address very simply.
The use table is an easy thing. We've already made a note about that. Is everybody okay with R two and R four being special permit and everything?
R one A, R one B as well. Well, they're not, they're, they don't allow nine or more units. If if we left it as by right, then. I don't care, Jonathan. I'm looking at the use table. We're gonna have a conflicting use table.
We have lots of conflicts in the use table just for the.
Well, why would we sit here and go another way?
That's the next item, by right housing, Malcolm. We can talk about it in conjunction, I think.
Well, okay.
I I don't feel like I have like the mental wherewithal at right now to like rework this co-living residential development for just existing or just new. I I just honestly don't feel like I have the capacity for that this evening. I would, I would need time to go through it and look at it again.
I I would. I I think wherever nine or more units are not allowed in this, then if we're gonna allow co-living in that thing, it should be by special permission.
But we're, but we're looking at we're proposing changing.
I'm I'm looking at the change by right.
Oh, you mean the change?
Yeah, the change. So so that would mean the B the H C, the U two.
I think, I think the conflict isn't actually a conflict because this refers to dwellings. Totally, that was not a dwelling, per se.
I'm not sure why that is, but that doesn't mean that somebody who are dwelling has has bathroom and has kitchen. Right? And it doesn't have co-bathrooms or co-kitchens. That wouldn't qualify as a dwelling. Still require, would qualify as co-living. No. Yeah. Well, it meets all requirements.
Not, not.
Well, if I missed, I mean, if you're gonna build a ten unit apartment somewhere.
The building code defines a dwelling as providing both for kitchen and cooking facilities and.
That's what Malcolm's point is that you could build it as ten dwelling units, meaning your definition of dwelling units, and then just call it co-housing. I mean, co-living.
They don't have to share.
Yes, you do.
Not by our.
That's how we define it.
Okay, let's, let's say we're gonna change it to that has to be shared with other residents.
Our share, yeah.
Well, all of these things have to be shared, because then the windflower and the thornwood wouldn't qualify.
But they're, but they're.
Gives it ambiguity and therefore flexibility.
But do you think those two, but I mean, they're gonna be, well, one is existing with a special permit, right? And now the other one is trying to exist with a special permit, so they don't. But if something were to come just like those, then they would have to be a special permit, right?
If it were new construction?
No, no, no. If they were if they were, I don't know, something else that wasn't already permitted as an, as a lodging, as an in. And, you know, it was like a, I don't know. It was semi-multi-unit, like there was a few units that were units, dwelling units. And then there was a, there was a number of rooms that maybe were on suite, right? And so they would have, that would have to be a special permit, even if they have like one unit was a standalone dwelling unit within that. It wouldn't be. Because of the way we're defining.
So that it gives us what we want. Which is to define what we want, what what co-housing is.
Co-living.
Co-living, yeah.
Well, we may, we may have in our minds what co-living is, but that's not what is defined here.
But we want to change the definition to clarify if you feel that that's a whole.
I had the definition a long time ago for Congress, and it was from the building code.
Right, that's what I was thinking. You did do some code review. I mean, even if we added co-living residential development, residential units are not dwellings or, you know, I feel like we could add an exclusion.
There's, well, but there may be some dwellings in there. Like
So can I read the definition from the building code? It says, Congress at living. Defines it, says a building or part thereof that contains sleeping units where residents share bathroom or kitchen facilities or both.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
That, so the thornwood and the windflower don't qualify.
Why?
Because residents there don't necessarily shine.
Because there's, each of them has a unit that's.
So it says residents share bathroom or kitchen.
Or both. No, but what, what Malcolm's saying is that each of them contain a self-contained, at least one self-contained dwelling unit, meaning both a kitchen and bathroom.
So what's the problem with that? I don't think that's right. I think they.
No, because there's a, there's a house on.
Oh, Lord have mercy, you guys.
That's co-housing. If they, if they were to come in for a special permit, now that they're in R four we're changing that, if they were to come in, that wouldn't be part of the special permit.
And isn't, well, the thornwood, doesn't the thornwood have, isn't one of the rooms have a kitchen? And, and isn't, well, the Thornwood, it, doesn't the Thornwood have, isn't one of the rooms have a kitchen and a?
I'm sure the Thornwood's apartment is.
Yeah.
Thornwood, it's self-contained.
Yeah, because that, that, it's the addition, right, has a, has a dwelling unit.
That wouldn't fall into this definition, the dwelling.
No, that's what I'm, that's what we're saying, so then they would have to be, like, if that was, if that was a new thing.
In that house, they would be then lodging, or they would be, well, not borders, cause then the owner wouldn't be there, but they'd be lodging.
By our definition.
But also, they'd be, it's a transient.
You could build that by right there, you could build up to, what, eight units or something by right? Um, yeah?
But you can only have one use, for a customary accessory use.
But this.
But the, co-living is, is a different thing.
No, that's what I'm, yeah.
It doesn't say that it can't be mixed. So, or actually, Thornwood's B two A, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all special permits, even if they're revised, you know, we're gonna do order.
We, we didn't, we didn't bother with that one because it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Well, it's got one, one property now, right?
Yeah.
That little corner.
And it's gonna be co-living.
No, no, the corner.
I mean, the building code definition to me is.
Yeah, that's clear.
So how do we work that into the definition here?
It is, it, what it may do is it may, it may force some reuses.
For congregate living?
We can just take the language right from here.
I mean, it may force some reuses into special permit, permit, or maybe just removing the kitchen, like if there's some units on the property that have.
It just wouldn't be part of, of their use for that, they, you can have separate uses in a building.
Excuse, oh, there we go.
So does that, would that be mixed use?
Mixed residential use, I guess, whatever you want.
And so then it might have to be a special permit.
Next year, it's a special permit.
So our objective in the next fifteen minutes is, I'm counting, and I'm gonna say go.
There's a lot of no's for.
Is to finalize the language or decide we're tabling this.
No, not this.
Oh, let's.
I don't wanna table it, but I also don't wanna rewrite the whole thing. So.
I'm sorry, why do we have this deadline, like tomorrow morning?
Because we have to go to public hearing.
Yeah.
We have to notice the public, we have to take public comment, it may still change, we have to start.
And it has to make it onto the one.
This has to be published.
It can be edited in a minor way, not in a substantive way. And substantive is a little gray, I don't fully know exactly, I mean, sometimes it's really obvious, but.
Can we just take the definition that Pedro read and use that?
I think we have a couple of things, we've got some notes from Chris, we've got the code living conversion, we've got the definition, we've got the table of uses, so we have like four things we need to get through right now, I think we're at the definition.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that definition.
We're fine with the, the C building code for congregate living.
Well, why don't we just put the.
I, I know, I'm just trying to give breadcrumbs to Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fun, I mean, we're gonna get another shot at this, so let's get something else and we can, uh, do a.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we can, we can go after the revising the reuse later, right?
So.
We wanna broaden out possible reuse, we can do that another time.
If we go then to the table of uses, we, did we decide that R two and R four are special permit? Or there was another thought on the table that we follow the?
Well, I don't think you have to do that because through congregate living definition, or co-living as I hear it, uh, it's clear that it, it contains sleeping units a residence share. And what Malcolm's proposing is they don't share, so it's not co-congregate living.
I, I understand that.
If they could do it as a dwelling and by right.
Right, I think the que, the question is, is not what you're raising though, the question is, should there be, um, a non, sh- should this co-living housing be by right in all districts? Or should there be a planning board special permit in some of the district?
Well, I think, uh, I think, um.
So what I had written down, just listening to you guys previously, was R two and R four, but then someone else said, oh, it should be consist, I think Malcolm, it was you who said it should be consistent with nine units or more, and the requirements there, whatever's by right there.
The worry is the size and the numbers you, I don't think in R one A or B where there are.
Yeah, I think it's two and four.
Or three, it's gonna be an issue, because it's a bunch of tiny, you know, you're gonna fit a lot on these blocks. The R two, R four, I mean, if, if there's a concern about the size they extend, I think you don't understand that, I guess.
Yeah, I think it doesn't allow at all, nine or more units, and you provide a special permit for forty-eight years, it should require a special permit.
But this is, co-living is different than market rate housing, because it's designed to support people who can't afford market rate housing. And it's precluded, or to make it a special permit, is counterintuitive to what we're trying to accomplish here.
I, I disagree.
So, so let's compromise, let's, let's go with the R two and the R four. We are not above changing our minds based on more feedback and a little more research, but for the purposes of putting something out to the public, could we do that? And go with special permit in the R two and R four? And, and I, I'm not saying the issue's closed, I hear what you're saying, Josh.
And we.
That's fine, and Malcolm's completely puts the opposite, so we've got all the perspectives here, this is good.
But with that definition, you can't use what Malcolm's saying and.
I invite you and Malcolm to have some robust discussion over the next week or two.
We always have robust.
And I'm not sure the tape, the definition actually solves anything, but I, it gets us.
Well, what it, what it does is, well, what it does is you, it precludes having dwelling units.
Count as co-living.
Count as co-living, so, eh, like the Thornwood wouldn't work unless they took out the kitchen.
So let's say you have, uh, let's say you have four, four units of, um, uh, apartments for dwelling, okay, and you have four co-living units, okay? What, where can you build without a special permit or by right?
You can't, you can't.
We don't have a mixed residential.
Eh, unless it was.
Maybe the M X D, maybe you could do it in one.
I don't know.
But if they're both by right.
They're not by right, in fact, you're not even allowed to build it in any of your zones.
To build what?
Uh, actually, you need a special permit from the select ward to build, uh, four or more units in your zones.
Yep.
Okay.
And you can't in R four.
So, so just leave that.
Yeah, so where can you build?
But these are not units.
Yeah. You wouldn't, you, you, you wouldn't be able to do the mix, no, it's what we're saying with co-living.
But then the whole purpose of co-living all.
I know, but I think we have to come back, I think we have to come back to that later, cause it doesn't seem like you, I, I think we have to come back to the reuse later, like we have to come up with something. Like if, you know, I mean, we can look around the R two and R four and are there existing buildings that we think like, oh, maybe, you know, there should be co-living in these, like, that's a good use of these, but, or I guess we have to look at. I don't know, we might have, I, I think we should come back to the reuse, so, I mean, because like the Thornwood wouldn't work.
I, I invite you to like.
Windflower wouldn't work.
Think about that.
Though, I mean, both of those wouldn't be co-living because they have a dwelling here.
I, I'm not sure I totally agree, I think there's gotta be like a majority sort of component to it.
So, well, so B two A, you'd need a special.
It's not an apartment complex, right, it's not an apartment. It's a, it's a.
You're not broke.
Right. It's a, it's, you know what, it's a semantic thing, it's so nuanced, right?
That's the law, but, but that's what we're saying, it's like, if, if, if it's a, if it has a dwelling unit on it, you have to, like, the dwelling unit has to be allowed by right in order for.
So what's the problem with that?
No, I think that's fine, but I think that's the limitation, right? So if it's, if it's like, uh, if it's got one, then, you know, single family in all zones except for the I's, or except for the I, right, you could do it. But you still need a special permit for the, uh, no, I'm sorry. No, you could do it in the I, so if it had one, so you could do it everywhere, right, if it had one, and then, so we just have to do the table uses with the dwelling units, like, is the dwelling unit allowed by right? Then you could do it, but in, so if you're talking about.
I feel like you're trying to figure out every potential scenario.
Or no, I'm just trying.
And I, I.
For, for Malcolm's, you know, so he can feel okay about it, but, so if we're talking, if we're worried about the other thing, where it's, you know, so four or more dwelling units are by special permit in all the Rs except for no in the R four, you could do it in the B, uh, as we're proposing, you could do it in the HBC, the B one, as we're proposing, you can already do it in the B two, it would be a special permit in the B two A.
Yeah, the B two A doesn't.
And then eh, you can do it in the B two X, the B three, the M X D, and the I two. You need a special permit in the I for four or more of the individual units in addition to the co-living units.
In addition to co-living.
Because as we're proposing, the co-living units are yeses across the board except for R two and R fours.
Well, no.
They don't.
I thought that was.
That was a suggestion.
Oh, okay, so the suggestion is yeses across the board except for R two and R four.
R two and R four on page two of our draft text. The compromised position I am suggesting is that it be planning board special permit. Uh, and not everybody agrees with this, I'm just saying to get a draft that we can put out to the public, that's the suggestion.
Can, can I, I might just.
Problem, if you, if you publish that it's gonna be a special permit and then you decide in the public hearing, actual public hearing, that it's not, I think that could be a problem.
So the rationale for this proposal is the one of less utilities, less walkable, bigger parcels, open space protection, blah, 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 I don't personally agree with it, but that's what I'm hearing is more the consensus position.
Can I propose like one little nuance to that? If we can make all of the who's the special permit granting authorities a separate article or separate articles, but removed from the, removed from the, um, like these articles.
So it is, it's under the by right housing, that's a separate article.
No, what I'm saying is, by right housing.
Not have the planning board special, has a special permit granting authority on our language, to have it as a separate.
Has it, as, just as a special permit, and then as a separate article, the special permit granting authority for this will make.
If the planning board is a special permit granting authority, it'll fail, for sure.
And that's what I'm worried about, I mean.
It won't necessarily fail, because the last time we tried that, eh, somebody just, somebody from the select ward amended it.
Yeah, so that's why I, if we can just have it, if we can have that as a separate, if we can have that as a separate articles, article or articles.
If we change it.
Are we changing the subject here or are we?
We're like so all over the place, this has gotten like ridiculous, I don't feel like we're being very productive at all.
We're trying to come to a agreement on this.
I know.
Can, can, can we take one topic at a time, cause we never get through stuff when we do this unraveling, because what we're doing right now, we are totally unraveling and going in a different direction, is this about co-living, cause if it's not, we need to hold it and.
No, it is about co-living, no, it's about dinner, no, it's.
Which I haven't had, and I'm grouchy about it.
No, I just wanted, I'm wondering about the audience for this right now, this document, and clarity and definitions. And these, how much, are, is the audience a lay audience, or are they selling by a special?
This has to go to town meeting.
Okay, well, I'm interested in seeing definitions for dwelling, this, that, and the other at the top of this, in case people need to know themselves the difference between them, because we're all gonna get confused with terminology.
So some of those definitions already exist in chapter eleven of our zoning bylaw.
I understand all of that, but, so.
She's talking about selling.
I'm talking about getting people to read this.
I'm talking about just getting a draft that we can get published, I mean, certainly, and I would love to have a separate conversation with you about the selling piece, and I think we do need to, the board, work on some communication so that we're introducing this in a way that is digestible, um, but we, we, that's gotta be secondary to like, what are we selling, and right now we don't even know what we're selling.
So, Brandy, if Jonathan, we compromise, I don't have a problem passing the zoning laws, because, eh, but I will not exclude it unless we go on to something, you know, after the public hearing, that's, you know, we can't just.
It's possible his position won't change, you know that, right? You know it's possible his position won't change.
Yeah.
And nor will yours.
Uh, mine's already changed three times, so.
Uh.
Another item on the same topic, or are you still gonna, you still wanna discuss what we've been discussing?
Yeah, well, we, we haven't addressed the outstanding items for co-living.
But I just wanted to mention about the notes I sent out today.
I haven't had a chance to read notes you sent out.
Yeah, actually, it was very good, but.
Okay, what do you suggest?
I don't know what, how we deal with it, if we wanna deal with it now, or we do.
We have to deal with it now.
We do have to deal with it.
We have to be, we have to put something down here.
Well, I had, I was given some homework to to, um, find some information on privacy, about bathrooms and laundry. And so I found, you know, a section in the building code about privacy for, uh, for public restrooms and water closets. Um, the number of, uh, what bathroom facilities that looked at the, the dorms, fraternities, sororities, boarding houses, and congregate living, there's two types of congregate living, but, and then laundry, there's no, nothing in the code, in the code, but I just kinda did some searching online for what people do. Um, so that, that's all in these notes, I don't know how you wanna deal with it.
Oh, okay, so you sent notes.
I mean, we can modify item seven.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I don't think you sent notes, I'm sorry.
We can get a, a long.
We can modify three.
We'll make it somewhere.
We can modify three.
Um, yeah, three is the, is.
Three is the one Chris said also five, so. If you have suggested language, then we should be working through it.
So the language that, uh, Pedro said, uh, actually makes sense, it's just, it would, it would say common bathrooms um, must be located on any floor that do not have no bathrooms, common bathrooms. Did we take out the whole, oh, we took out that whole.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think this number three is okay.
Yeah, our number three is okay, yeah.
Is it, is it just written awkwardly and?
No, we took away.
And bathing is the same.
Common bathrooms must be located on any floor with units that do not have their own full bathrooms, common bathrooms must be located on any floor where units do not have their own bathrooms.
Right, with this one?
With, it's a.
Common bathrooms must be located on any floor with units.
That do not have.
That do not have their own full bathroom. Okay, common bathrooms, go ahead, Chris.
No, the second sentence doesn't read very well.
Common bathrooms at a ratio of at least one for every eight occupants shall have shower or bathtub facility.
But we have nothing for water closets or lavatories.
Yeah, lavatories are important.
Um.
Does the building code just define what that ratio needs to be? So can we just say common bathrooms shall be provided at a ratio consistent with the building code?
Seems really low.
It's just that the, the only thing is that co-living or collaborative living is not a definition in the building code, it's congregative. So if somebody, yeah, we have to put our own, because if somebody goes to the building code, they'll never find what the requirements are.
Did you have language for what that ratio needs to be? Did you have language or what that ratio needs to be? That's in your notes here.
Yeah, so I think the one per eight that we have is good. We just don't have anything for lavatories or water closets. We just have the bathing.
Chris, have we reached out to get more? From construct, CDC.
No, we were, we said we would do that when we submit this draft. We would specifically reach back out to them and say, here's our updated draft.
And you specifically look at the bathrooms and the laundry facilities.
There were, I think, a number of practical things that we wanted.
They also, they also include a service, I thought that was interesting.
A service.
So. So maybe we should say common bathrooms um should have at least. Uh, one. Bath, a shower bathtub facility for each eight occupants, one water closet. Or lavatory for each ten occupants.
I, I would like to.
Eight, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, because the code, I mean. I mean, I, I, I'm just following what you, you know, what was in code here, and I think that. I mean, this, and this has to be viewed as a minimum. I mean, it's not a.
So I would like to suggest it's common bathrooms.
Has. A water closet and a sink. That's the definition of a bathroom.
Not really.
Common bathrooms shall have hole in. And then bullets. Water clo- water closet at one per eight, lavatory at one per eight, bathing at one per eight.
Do we have, is there a percent of the bullets in the Bible?
ABC, I don't know.
And and it has to read at least or a minimum of.
Shall have a minimum of. Do you happen to have that text? I'm writing it down, but I can give it to you. I'll write it. I'll send you an email after this.
Great.
Okay.
What do we have? Do we have anything on security in there? On security, whether it's supposed to be in the same number three?
We, we took out the uh, um, the privacy.
Privacy and.
Securities, and I, I don't think we. Um.
Well, visual screen shattered. Water closet compartment. These water closets utilized. By public employees shall occupy a separate compartment in walls or partitions. But this is all for public stuff. Water closet compartment cannot be required in single occupant toilet rooms with lockable doors. Toilet rooms located in child baker facilities. This provision is not applicable to toilet areas located in I three.
See, don't you want something like that in this?
I, I.
But they still, they still have to conform to the code.
Yeah.
Public restroom shall be visually screened from outside entry or exit door to ensure user privacy within the restroom.
Is it public though if it's just the?
Yeah, but I mean, it's kind of public.
And that's, yeah, but it's not public because it's just for the resident's use, right?
I know, but that's public. It's like a.
Yeah, so he can say common bathrooms are trying to solve.
Okay, um, all right, so I think. That is all of the. Changes for co.
We'll get laundry too. That's.
Well, I thought for laundry, we were going to. Leave it at this one per ten.
Even if you have more than ten, there wasn't that issue.
For more than ten units. Provide an additional one for ten. I thought we streamlined that the last time, and then this was one we were going to put an asterisk on and ask the housing partners if they felt that was insufficient. Okay, all right.
I love this washroom prior thing defined by age.
I know, it's so weird. Why do seniors do less laundry? It makes no sense.
They just don't feel very dirty. I like how older working adults get less dirty than younger working adults.
All right, people, okay, all right. So I will give you a little markup.
If one skills to stay clean.
Okay.
While they work.
Um, by right housing.
Can I ask about that?
Yes.
Is there a change in your recognition?
Yes.
And you've got.
Pedro.
No, I need Pedro to send it to me.
I'm sure I can read that.
Yeah, it's really good.
Don't read it again.
Buildings or parts thereof. That contains. Sleeping units. Where residents share. Bathroom or kitchen facilities are booked. Perfect.
Yes. Great.
I think.
And then for common bathrooms, we want to strike the last sentence. And replace it with common bathrooms shall have a minimum of. And then follow that with. A and C for water closet and lavatory.
I'd like to go collective. That's, I have a book.
I started out.
I had you, so I started at the building.
And so Pedro, the, so the codes. So when you have these bathrooms in a, like these common bathrooms, then they're going to have to follow this part of the code. For privacy and.
And then.
And so that's where.
It'll be considered, whatever they're looking at, be considered congregate living because.
We're going to leave it undetermined.
But, you know, a late person will keep looking for co-living.
Okay, all right. Are there any um changes beyond what we have illustrated here in the red line version for by right housing?
I mean, the only thing is, I agree with Jeremy and. I hate to. To contradict Jonathan, but planning for special permits will never apply.
I agree.
We already have.
Yeah, I kind of, yeah, we got pushed back already.
I'd rather have this like we're looking at it than not have it passed.
Yeah.
Fine.
Why would you assign that to a board?
I don't know. I think it's stupid.
It'll pass and the law will be in the books.
Yep. Rather have it.
Sometimes you have to. It's just that's reality, yeah.
All right. So we've changed everything back to SB. For the I column. And it was going to be. Only the I column that was planning for Chris. Okay, um, the third item trees. Do we have any additional changes for the proposed six point three point five or meetings of landscape barriers? Hearing none, we will conclude item six on our agenda.
Oh, my gosh.
Five more to go.
Okay. Yes.
Welcome in by the threshold.
Yes.
So you're making no changes to the I column?
Yeah, we made change in the P V S.
Yes.
I see.
Here.
And so should be, should have peanut butter. That's what they mean, right? Yeah.
Um, yes.
General.
Master plan review.
Okay, we just want to remind everybody the twenty second is the deadline. For getting any reports on the, from the committees to who are assigned to you. And so get whatever, I mean, whatever we have in whatever form it exists in to. And call me with it.
Thank you, Jack.
And then the other thing is I just want to remind everybody that when we went through all of our asks. We put in, we had a number that we were going to go back and revisit. And at the time, we named which ones we wanted to revisit.
Mm-hmm.
So um, I'm assuming that will be some future date to be determined.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for the reminder. I'll make a note.
And I'll actually draw, I'll call out the ones that are still up versus in the discussion. And I'll send it to you.
That'd be great.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You have a report card that you can send. A report card? That was a, so you want to have that filled out for each board? Would you like?
I thought you sent us Pedro's and like Pedro's.
Put them on the treatment.
Okay. Non-planners report, sir, if you have anything.
Uh, preparing leave, leave draft, copies of two matters which you'll hear at your next. Meeting, first with the subdivision, the finished subdivision. For the North Plenary of Habitat for Humanity Development with the Oral Housing Trust. They have those plans here. They have the public here in the next, um, next meeting at six o'clock. Do you want to make the site visit? You remember the site is. Barely.
It's tree. Thickly wooded.
Thinly brushed.
Yes.
Really difficult to see. I think you're all pretty.
Personally, I think a Google or visit is really effective for that particular site.
Flag down on the area. So no site is, so so subdivision public hearing, please get this one before you leave. And uh, special permit application review for Timberland Heights Nursing Home.
Okay, do we have an application yet for that or we're just expecting?
Please give it, I mean, if you want to.
So what are, what are they doing?
Uh, I'll give you the plan.
Do we need a site visit?
Okay, anything else?
Alan, you shouldn't do a site visit.
Actually, I would recommend a site. Are they turning into market rate units?
No.
Okay, so let's review the application. See, you guys want a site visit. I'm not going to be here on the twenty second, so you get to run the radio. Um, you'll be fine.
These guys are awful when you're not here. They are. They won't help me.
Do you guys want to take this? Because we need to just make sure you get that.
I want to say.
I thought I could say this.
Say visit to Timberland Heights.
Okay.
What, what time is it going to be dark by then? Like five thirty? So.
Let's say five.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock on the twenty second.
PM. On two twenty-two, twenty-four.
Two twenty-two, twenty-four.
Okay, I'll make a note.
We get it for on.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. Do we have board and subcommittee updates, issues or concerns? Jeremy.
Um. So at our last. Housing subcommittee meeting, um. We brought up that, um, it was brought up that. Um, we wanted to, I guess. Review our charter and if the subcommittee needs to exist further. Going forward. Um, so that is on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then, of course, if it, if this subcommittee feels that it shouldn't. Continue, then we'll bring that to the joint meeting.
You'll bring it back to your respective boards?
Well, yeah, but but I think if, I think in order to defend it, we have to take it to the joint select board planning.
Yeah, so if you guys.
Committee is.
Just stop showing up, just scheduling meetings.
Just dissolve.
So.
We couldn't figure out.
Are, are you? Finding that you've sort of exhausted the exploring of concepts and.
Well.
I mean, I think we raised this a few months ago.
One thing we, we got stuck on the. The list of things as that was like our charter and I don't. I, I wasn't kind of operating under that assumption, and so. I, I think it's really, I, especially since I brought up. In this body, bringing, you know, different. Um. Contractors and would be contractors here to hear about, you know, what's um, uh. What's preventing housing development from happening and.
Mm-hmm.
Great parents and and then this. What? Developers, excuse me, developers or. But I think it was going down the line all the way to maybe, you know, like plumbers. Why don't, isn't a plumber wanting to, you know, build? Five units.
As we go to North High School.
So, okay.
But anyways, and then, and then this board sent, it thought that that would be a good place for it. Uh, to see them in the sub, sub committee.
Bill?
Yeah, remember, I, I, when I brought it up here, there was like, oh, yeah. You should.
Um, part of that was the one I brought up, understanding the committee. Uh, I'm not sure we have a purpose, but.
Garfield's feeling like it's hard to make the meetings. I think that's the thing. I think Lee's definitely like rah rah, we should keep going. I'm definitely in the, we should keep going. Malcolm, I think is like.
I don't think we need to hush through everybody's feelings and it's fine if it's around its course. And it could be reconstituted at some point in the future if it. Serves another purpose.
But I think.
Anything else, just in terms of that?
I mean, I think the big thing is, is that we don't have really a clearly defined. Charter. And that's.
Probably we ever did, actually.
Yeah, and so we might come up with one to bring back to them.
Okay.
To each board in the joint meeting.
All right, thank you. Thanks for sitting on. Uh.
It's on the, it's on the website. Anyway, go on.
Uh, Malcolm, anything for Jackie? Anything for you?
And I'm interested.
I just want to quickly point out something that I thought was really great from Nick's narrative. When he talked about zoning. That up until nineteen sixty, we could rebuild the downtown, but as of nineteen sixty, we can't rebuild the most cherished parts of our town.
Thank you for that observation. Um.
That, and that came up, going back to the housing subcommittee, when we met with the developer, the one developer we met with, brought that up.
Yeah, that, that, I, I don't disagree with you. Yeah, go ahead.
The other, the other thing, now that this came up, I mean, I've always thought that that was subcommittee should be part of this board, and I think it'd be more effective at this. Or at least it could be more active, I think, if members of this board. Made it like three members took it up and then it rotates or something like that, because we can bring people to our meetings to talk. I mean, we could do all this stuff.
Our zoning. Does not reinforce the historic development pattern in lots of different ways, and we've known that for.
I don't know, I'm talking about the subcommittee.
Oh, the subcommittee. You're giving them tasks to do?
No, I'm just thinking, I'm just telling you guys that that committee if.
If we already know it, we don't need.
Well, I mean, the purpose of the subcommittee was to try and get the select board engaged in housing because they weren't.
But we could have a, we could have our own subcommittee on housing.
Be different, and it could, it could be a recurring kind of think tank, you know?
Yeah.
I always thought. That's an, that's an idea that you have.
That would be good.
Yeah.
And Jack even thinks it's a good idea, and I, that I brought up.
If there's three of us, though, we have to call it a planning board meeting, right?
Yes.
It's a subcommittee.
Anything else?
So let's move on.
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's anyway.
Go. You got anything for us?
Do you have anything else?
I just gave you.
That was this, okay.
I like that.
No, the only um, subcommittee I'm on is like Mansfield and it's under construction. And it's progressing, but it's on hold. You can, you and like, you can do what my husband and I do. We walk down, we touch the fence and turn around and come back. The fences, uh, if you start at the boat launch and it gets to the house, um, the single family house that is at the end there. So not quite East Pew Pool driveway. So this progressing, it's going to be a big change.
Runner thing.
It's going to be really great because it's going to protect water quality and provide better access to lake. Um, anything else? Citizens speak. Claudia, you're a trooper. If you.
Yeah, you're intrepid.
I think she likes it.
So we're going to spend a Thursday evening.
Entertaining.
Claudia Shapiro, seventy-eight, third long plane road for the record. Um, correction, the February twelfth, two thousand and eight attorney's letter to the airport handwritten note. Just planning board hangars are really for subdivision. And I wanted to know, has anyone looked into my concerns voiced at the January twenty ninth select board priority planning in the select board? Planning board special joint meeting. Specifically, the FAA.
Is that your comment?
Yeah, I reached out to a friend who's a pilot in Los Angeles about flight, about visual flight rules and um. Night flying rules. And that was something that was raised early on. Yeah, I know those distinctions. I just wanted to get his perspective.
Yeah, I was thinking more about the FAA, about your comment, Mr. Hampton.
Both.
In the letter that you wrote. Commented to the board, whatever. Last time I was here, we regret our money. Yeah, about you cautioning them to contact the federal government about vested rights. For granting a special permit. That's why I'm asking, because I have contacted the FAA numerous times. And I'm a little surprised that no one in the town has.
Uh, I have contacted the FAA on other matters, but not on your matter specifically.
Well, maybe you would consider. Doing that, or someone would consider doing. Something. in regards to my numerous concerns that I've been voiced over the years.
I've also reached out to a friend who was involved in the, um, Santa Monica Airport when it was active and tried to keep it alive. And it was shut down. And so he was, he was very involved in the discussions about with the FAA and local rights and all of that kind of. And so he's just a quiet resource of how it would work. So, no, I was just reaching out to a friend. And, and he basically is, he's like a lawyer because he can break, break it down into all sorts of component parts and follow up questions. So. We'll leave you a loving note too.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
And you did drop something. I'm not sure what that was.
Is there anything left that you thought?
Yes.
Okay, anybody? James? James?
Good evening, board. This is James, eighty-four North Plain Road. I just had a question, really a comment. If the EPA or I'm sorry, not the EPA, if the, uh, G E uh, changes its, its routes from more of trucks to rail, does the planning board have any oversight over changing like the railroad dimensions or do they have to create sightings or anything like that? Just a question.
I'm not aware that we have any jurisdiction over rail activity. I believe that's federal.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, if there are no other comments, we will adjourn at eight fifty-one. Thank you, everybody.